Thanks, hear me okay? Okay, there's Bert, just waiting. Thank. Hi, Marcy, thanks for coming back.
Karen, you're welcome. Happy to be here. Thank you for coming back.
Tom, good, okay. We've got a full crew. Do we have staff present that's ready to present? Okay, it's four o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting of the Mansitna Planning Commission to order. Um, first order of business is audience participation. If anyone out there in the world wants to make a comment to the commission on anything that's not being discussed tonight, we'd love to hear from you.
And Karen, I don't have any hands raised.
Oh, hi, Scott. I can't see you. I can hear you. Um, okay, no hands. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. From the February 10th meeting, I'm assuming the board has all received them, reviewed them. I had one suggestion for a change, actually two. Um, on page, I don't think the pages are numbers, but page four. Um, where it's talking about, um, the Loop Road will stop just north of the northern entrance and the fire turnaround will function as the bus turnaround. I'd like to amend that to say school bus turnaround. I don't think we're talking about any other kind of bus in there. Is that correct? Okay, and then the other one. Did we find the spelling of Kathy? Is it Kathy? Um, somebody who we couldn't. Yeah, Kathy Meskaman. I'd like to have the record correct her name, have her name spelled correctly if we, if we can figure that out. I think she said she submitted a written comment, so we may be able to find her spelling on that. Anybody else have additions, corrections? Edits? Everybody's name otherwise spelled correctly? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February meeting as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like we've got approved minutes. Okay, um, before we get started on the housing ordinance update, um, I just want to verify what material is the correct material for us to be reviewing today. We received a copy from Chris and we also received a copy from Cody. And I'm not sure if they were identical. And then we have a late update that just came in an hour ago or so, and I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same material as we're going. Um, for our post-meeting review. Any clarity on that from anybody?
I assumed that they were the same things, but I didn't compare them page to page.
That was my assumption too.
Yeah, I went through them both and they looked almost the same. If we got an amendment, um, I haven't seen it. Does anybody know what was in it?
Now, let's see.
Maybe I can help explain. Um, last week with the packet, you received a report. It was the code concepts report. And then today, uh, I had Cody send out a presentation.
Okay.
On a link, excuse me, sorry. And it was a presentation at the end of a link. And then there were actually two, um, tables that were sent as well just today. To help, um, it's supplemental information to help you see the code audit that we've conducted to your um, housing use zones.
Okay, will you be going through those with us today, Marcy?
Yes, they will be a topic of the presentation.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, let's get started. Um, Marcy or Scott F? Who's, who's taking the lead on this today?
I think I can just jump in and start. Yeah, thanks, Scott. I'm going to, uh, share my screen. And it might take me a moment to get, um, that link up. Can someone turn sharing on? Um, and can you please let me know if you can see this?
There it is.
Okay. Do I need to put this into presentation mode or is this sufficient? Feedback on that, anybody?
It works for me. Is this the same thing that you linked to in the email today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, all right. So yeah, thank you for being here. This is the really the first work session we are having. This will be the first of a series to get us through the code amendments step of this project. And a week ago, as I mentioned earlier, we, we, uh, sent out a report that goes, that went over each of these four code concepts separately in a report form. And I'm going to walk you through that today, but also the purpose of today's presentation is to, you know, work with you on these concepts and get your comments. And, uh, so we'll go through these one by one. They are four, four concepts though, that I presented to you, um, that I would like to go through. And the reason I'm putting them into these con- concept, uh, framework, uh, if you could think of it that way. Is that if we jump straight into these kinds of amendments that I'm showing you here, these track change amendments to your um, ordinances, I think people would get a little lost. Uh, they also would be hard to keep track of what is the purpose here. Um, but this is the kind of process that most cities in Tillamook are going through now to, uh, comply with the House, the Senate Bill 406. And the large cities model code is they're following this document here, uh, many of them, as you can, if you can see where I'm highlighting. Um, the state provided a model code and most cities are just, um, adopting those in whole or in part in a track change code amendments to their chapters. But as he, um, has been pointed out to me from the beginning of this project, Mansinida is a very special place. And you also asked for a form-based approach to be taken to these code amendments. So we are taking a more complicated approach. Um, and I find it easier to explain the types of amendments that we're talking about in terms of concepts. So what, um, I'm showing you here is also what was in your report earlier. It's also in the presentation. You have a copy of this presentation, but I'll just summarize the four concepts had to do with housing and a form-based approach and land division and then parking. So most, and it's most simple, we are amending your housing provisions in your zoning ordinance 954. But we're also adopting a form-based approach, which means that, uh, we're acknowledging there are different um, places or contexts, as we called them in your report that deserve slightly different form treatment. And they should be regulated in a customized way. And then we also, there was interest in going above and beyond the uh, development and use ordinances, uh, articles. And amending your subdivision or your land division, because if we want to do some of the things that you've asked for like alleys or smaller lots, flag lots, we will need to adopt a subdivision. So in the, uh, report that was sent to you last week, you had an appendix. That was the land division ordinance that's being proposed. And last, if we're going to address parking, which is often a controversial topic. I want to talk to you about some ways that we might be able to design streets and right of way and the edges of the front edges of properties so that we could incorporate, uh, parking in more creative way, um, possibly more parking. And not add to paving, additional paving of lots, which I think is as environmental impacts, which I don't think are good. Um, so we're going to talk about you to those in one by one. We're going to pause at the end of each concept and I'm going to, uh, hopefully have a discussion with you. And just to start with, I'm going to switch the order of two and one. So we're going to start with two because it occurred to me today that uh, it's a little easier to understand the housing proposal if you understand the form-based approach. So there's a couple of specific proposals in the report. They are establish a form-based approach appropriate to each context zone. And establish a floor area ratio, um, maximum cap of 2,500 square feet for the first dwelling unit with a give back for additional dwelling units. And, uh, the, I'm going to explain the second bullet here, but we're not going to talk about it, um, in much more detail. It's, but it is you do not have a floor area ratio right now. It, um, that applies to residential. You only have a FAR that applies to commercial. Um, but when we test what is possible in the building envelope that's defined by your setbacks and your height. It's a very, very large building and it's, uh, the larger your lot, the larger it is. One of the things that um, you asked me to look into earlier in our discussions was, uh, capping the total development area. So this is an approach that we can discuss further, but this is something that other cities are doing, um, around the middle housing and have had quite a bit of success at getting more units and smaller units and more affordable units. So next I would like to talk about the context zones. There are, in my view, three, uh, this is based on walking your streets and, uh, the drone videos that we sent out, also studying those studying the topography, the building footprints and the plat- patterns and the zoning patterns, of course. And I'm going to go through A, B, and C context zones here just briefly. Um, what I did for your benefit was catalog the main categories of each context zone in terms of zoning, lot size, topography, blocks, streets and building orientation and massing, and also a little bit about the era that, that. a little bit about the era that that area, those areas represent. So context area A, north of Laneta, it's predominantly R two. That's the largest amount of zoning designation there, but there's also some R three and R four close to Laneta. Uh, it's a mix of lot sizes, even though the minimum lot size per years ordinance is, uh, five thousand square feet, there's really a mix of under five thousand and over five thousand, um, lots here. And there is some topography that's pretty significant, uh, rising up to points here and here um, near Cherry Street and Ebo Avenue, is that how you say that? And, um, those are high points. It's an interesting kind of wave pattern that the topography makes in Manzanita. And the, of all of the areas in Manzanita has the most irregular, interesting pattern of, uh, plating, uh, or blocks. As you can see, it's a lot of, um, long blocks that are diagonal with a kind of, um, point here, uh, where they meet, some of them meet. And then, uh, there are often, uh, the streets are quite wide for local traffic streets, uh, which is one of the reasons why I want to talk to you about parking, um, using some of those for parking. Uh, there's most of these streets, but not all of them are paved and they're frequently bordered by a gravel verge. You can kind of see an example here. It's gravel or it's sometimes planted, sometimes it's overtaken by the, the planting in the yard. And then building orientation and massing here is really more varied than in anywhere else. Uh, there are a lot of, um, homes that are above, you know, the street level, maybe even by one and a half, uh, levels. And, um, sometimes the buildings are not even visible from the street, but, but then there's also housing that sits right out the street. And I think that this is the earliest part of your city or your town, early nineteen hundreds to present. Uh, concept, it context area B is mostly the area to the south of Laneta, closer to the beach and, uh, this is also predominantly R two, but again, there's some R three and R four close to Laneta. And again, it's a mix of lot sizes here, similar to context area A. Um, but it definitely doesn't fit your minimum lot size. I mean, it's very interesting to us to find that, um, these lots would be not considered non-conforming in a much more kind of hard-nosed city that, um, you know, is, is a little bit more, um, sticks to the code. It's moderately sloped here, but not as much as A. And it's got these same long blocks, but these are really, um, organized perpendicular to the coast to, and to, uh, Nakarney Boulevard. You also have wide streets here too. Again, here we see this gravel verge. It's pretty common. There are also unpaved streets, streets here. This is a driveway, not a street on this lower photo here. Um, and buildings are generally face the street there. This, um, kind of height difference is a little unusual. And I believe that this was probably plotted like in the mid-century of, uh, the last century. Lastly, we have, um, what I call context area C. It's really up on the hills, um, hillside, hilltops, ridge lines, um, overlooking the golf course and Highline Drive, Highland Drive. This is predominantly your SRR zoning, uh, there's some R two and there's some RMD. Uh, and some of this areas in the area that's been, that has been outside of your city boundary, it was now inside. These lots are generally larger, generally seven thousand square feet and greater. And this is highly sloped. Um, I want to point out some interesting things about the blocks, even though this is newer development, there's are no sidewalks. Um, there are no blocks of the kind that we find in those other more traditional neighborhoods of Manzanita, that is, they're, they're not bounded on all sides by a street, they're mostly, um, lots that kind of spill down from a central spine street and don't have a back, um, side street. Um, but I, kind of in contrast to that pattern, we, this is also where the classic street cottages, um, development is, which is a really unique to Manzanita development. The lots are very wide, um, and generally wider than they are deep and the houses are, are similarly wide and the frontage is characterized by garages. Sometimes the garage is more than fifty percent of the front facade. And this area is developed, has been developed since the nineteen eighties. So we're coming to the end of this section where I'm going to ask you, um, for a discussion, but let me just end on some of the mechanics of the form-based code that you're going to see in the code amendments will be more illustrations. And you'll probably, you will see more tables where, um, the different standards are, are listed in a table rather than in an, uh, listing by chapter or by article like you have right now. It'll make it easier to understand. It'll also help us kind of picture the form based philosophy that we're applying across different context zones or different zones. We'll have diagrams like this that are keyed to the tables. So the dimensional standards are actually shown in plan and section views. So in this example from another form-based code that we worked on, this is a section through the site and this is a plan of the site. And each of these, uh, circles represents a dimension on the table. That's a kind of common, um, approach for a form-based code. There are also very, very specific state standards for certain housing types, such as this one for cottage cluster. And we may just use or adapt from this type of graphic, uh, your standards for cottage clusters. And lastly, we probably will be including more information about what happens on the front of the building, what, and how the street plane or the, the front yard plane and the front facade are related to each other. Cause that's really important. And, um, I guess before I leave this, I'll also say we will be having more information about the materials of the buildings, the exterior materials, um, probably in a menu format where, um, applicant can choose from multiple options to comply, but they will all be clear and objective. Okay, so, um, I guess this is my starting set of questions, but feel free to, um, throw out some new question if I haven't addressed. Do you think these context zones are understandable? Um, should we move forward with the proposals to, uh, customize your development code to context zones? Or any questions?
Uh, Marcy? You, you've drawn circles on the maps. Um, yeah, con- your context areas. And I'm, and I get a sense that the circles and the description don't overlay exactly. Um, your context area A, m- mostly north of, um, Laneta. I, I think your description is fabulous. It, it really does kind of describe that area. Um, I've lived in that area and the one south of Laneta, so I kind of have a feel for both of them. But, um, if I understand it right, s- south of Laneta, all the way down to the state park you're thinking of is kind of one with, with the, uh, peeling out the ridge, ridge roads and the, and the, the new Highlands development kind, is that correct?
Um, so context area B is mostly south of Laneta and, uh, it, it does include this area here. And then this area here, and rather than outlining that, uh, I, I was reluctant to put a hard line outline around the, the area because I, I want, I think the edges are a little bit more fluid. And, um, so we, I used circles, it might not work as well as it could, which you seem to be commenting on, John. Cause the circles don't, like here, the circle, this circle does definitely, does not completely align with, uh, north of Laneta. You can see it covers some area to the south, but I'm only really talking about the area to the north.
Your description describes it perfectly and it, it almost completely north of Laneta. Um, Laneta is the first, um, Manzanita Avenue kind of down in the flats, but really from Laneta north, it does slope up and it's, you described it really well. And I think you've described context area B really well too, and it's basically flat. Um, and there's there's been some reaction to smaller, I mean, there's some small lots in there, um, for various reasons that have been, and, and then the areas further south have been kind of slowly incorporated into cities. So, and then Highlands Ridge Road, all, all that, it's a separate content. I, I, your three contexts are really good and I think, um, if we can co- come up with a good way to, um, form base our code to fit these areas. Like, I mean, some of the comments you made like up in context area A, um, because the houses sit up high, a lot of houses up there don't have garages because the driveway would be too steep and your idea of having a, you know, a maybe closer to the road driveway or something would, would work, things like that, so.
Exactly, right. One of the, one of the issues that I think we want to talk about when we talk about parking related to the north area is that, uh, it may be it is probably, um, generally we would say parking and garages should not be located on the front property line. I mean, generally that's kind of a rule in residential, um, or newer, newer residential, especially form-based, um, coding. But in that area, that may be the only way that somebody could actually have a garage as if it's at the pro- front property line. Maybe they even have a deck on top of it, you know, and it's connected to the house. And so there may be an exception, uh, because of the context to that rule. And that's the kind of thing that I want to make way for as we get into the actual development code proposal. Bert?
Uh, yes, this is a really terrific work, Marcy. I, I like the, uh, movement towards context. I think that's important, you know, that's going to help with the granularity of the community. And, uh, I imagine that as you move on, you'll actually have to create kind of harder boundaries to the different context zones. Is that what you're thinking?
I'm more thinking that when we talk about the zoning districts that I'm proposing, um, which I think may match up a little bit with these context zones. Um, so that's the next chapter that I want to cover with you.
But, but the, but if, if I've got a lot in, in one of the districts, I'll know that I need to work with that context overlay or zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second question I have is, uh, you know, we're doing housing, right? Cause we need to do the housing stuff, but, uh, as you look at the form-based code, which I think is super important for our city, including the materiality, you know, super important, you know, even maybe colors, uh, that, uh, uh, that, like, uh, the commercial zones, will they also have their own form-based code? Or how are you thinking about that? Like the mixed use like Laneta, for instance, or one-on-one edge or stuff?
So I'm thinking that we would not address the commercial zone to much extent in this project, but we may, uh, write out a prescription for how further work needs to address the form-based aspect of that, um, those zones. Our focus is, um, making sure that your residential zones are fully, you know, middle housing. And the commercial zones, my work there, I believe, is limited to making sure that uh, all the housing types can't be accommodated there, but not necessarily, um, an extensive form-based code approach.
Yeah, and if I could jump in, Marcy, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, if a, a really big kind of bonus that would come out of this would be maybe just a little recommendation to explore that form-based in those o- other zones, especially since we're doing the comp plan now, that can become, you know, a, a recommendation of the comp plan as well. So tying this work to the comp plan that's, you know, obviously we're working on i- in parallel might be something that would be great because, like you said, the focus is on the, on the residential zones, but, but we shouldn't lose that, uh, kind of momentum or those thoughts in terms of.
Yeah, I, I would encourage the, uh, uh, city and the city council to really look at this as a, a really tremendous once in thirty, forty year opportunity to update, uh, you know, the language and the spec- specifications of how we want our city to be in the future. And, and these are the advanced, uh, planning camp concepts. And so I think, uh, kind of a rework of the whole land use and zoning code uh, ordinances into a form-based strategy is really warranted because it probably won't happen again for, we know at least probably ten years. And this is a super great opportunity to set and chart the course of Manzanita for the next fifty years, really.
I agree. Uh, should we go to, uh, Chair Reddick next?
Sure, I'd be happy. Um, I have, uh, it seems to me that the materials you pre- presented so far with the context areas seem to, um, match the responses that from the workshop that was done, I think in January or maybe December, um, where people plotted where they would like to see certain kinds of development and, and would like not to see certain kinds of development. And I just wanted to check, maybe John, you can weigh in on this. Um, has, I'm assuming that this material that we're seeing today has been reviewed by the PASC. And, um, does it pretty much align with, um, their work, um, in terms of making sure that the public's interest is presented here as well?
We didn't, we specifically have not looked at these context areas yet. Um, I think, um, Planning Commission is getting first look at this at the moment and, uh, I we did talk about context at, at that meeting, um, that we had, the community meeting that we had. And again, with you, I don't remember if it was November, December, December, uh, or January, but it was, you know, it was cold that night. Um, uh, and, and we didn't really talk about zoning or codes in that meeting, but we did talk about, um, things we would like to see happen and it mostly revolved around housing types. And Marcy, you can explain how we did that with the little models and the little, and we put them on the maps and, and I, I do agree, uh, Karen, that the comments we got sort of fit these context areas pretty well. Um, uh, we, we saw a lot of, and, and parks and, and recreation was kind of part of that discussion as well. And kind of the seams between the context areas and the paths, um, were important to the group, um. Uh, and we saw a lot of, uh, trails and parks, um, winding their way down our existing open space as well. So something to be thinking about. I don't know if that made any sense at all, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's all gonna weave together.
Yeah, but the PASC has not specifically looked at these context areas yet.
Okay, okay, I'm really happy to have. Okay, okay. I'm really happy to have this presentation of the context areas, and I don't know how many people we have online today. I hope we have a lot. Um, because it's a reorientation of our thinking. And it's taking me um a little while to kind of wrap my head around what what you mean by these um this form-based approach and and I really appreciate this. I I think it's great, but I just don't want us to get too far ahead of the rest of the public. Um, so I want to make sure that whatever, you know, that we aren't imposing anything on the city without having the opportunity for them to really weigh in on on these kinds of uh contexts and and these, and I think I I agree with Bert that I think um that we're going to need to kind of hone in on really what we mean by context area A, because my house is in two different areas and I wouldn't want.
No, it's not, I don't think.
Well, yeah, it is. Um, it's in one of the, it's in the big circle A, and it's in the smallest northerly circle of B. And I just don't want the city to have to be put in the position of saying, well, you're in this area, but I want to do what this area calls for. So you you know, I think we we just need to make sure that we're pretty clear and objective when we're talking about um what's a potential use of a of a lot.
Thank you. This is really good feedback, and I think the next little um chapter of our presentation will add some harder lines to this discussion. I'll just say quickly, though, that I think the context zones and the community uh feedback line up to some extent, and that's my happy place. You know, I want to find the zoning code approach that kind of lines up with the zoning designations that you currently have. And to some extent, they line up with a context zone, which is a physical reality, and they line up with the community input that we receive. That would be my perfect place. Um, so we'll see if we're gonna get there.
I I think you're, I think you're really close, and I just, uh just one more last little thing is as we're changing changing zoning designations, I want to make sure we don't run afoul of any takings issues.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's very much.
I think you, I think you've done it.
Part of the next, the next bit.
Okay.
Tom?
Uh, thank you. You asked for feedback. He- here's mine. I I agree with your descriptions of the three general zones, residential zones in the in the city. It it matches up with my own understanding. And so if you're asking for approval of of that concept, I'm I'm with you so far, but I want I want to be clear that I don't necessarily agree that we should have different housing rules by zone, uh in particular when it comes to types of housing permitted, which I, in looking at your materials, may be something that we are going to discuss next. So if in accepting the concept that we've got three, you could describe three zones um by terrain and housing style, slope. I don't necessarily accept that, okay, now let's go about applying different rules in those zones.
Or having different housing types.
In in particular about that, and I guess we'll speak to that in a bit. I hope we will.
Yeah, we we will for sure. Thanks. Um, John, did you want to say something?
Well, I I think Tom asked the question, and I think you kind of answered it. We have we have our uh zones and we have context areas, and they kind of overlap each other. And I think you do probably need to explain that better than we have so far, and it may be you want to wait until you discuss codes a little bit before you um go back and overlay them. Um, and and the explanation probably make more sense um after you talk about zoning uh code, you know, zoning areas and zones a little bit.
Right.
But they're two separate things, I think. I I want to make sure that nobody gets confused by it.
Yeah, I and um acknowledging that this is a little confusing to begin with. I mean, we're trying to mix the physical form of what's there and that we respect that as we add more infill and density to it or or connected compact housing to it. You know, we want to acknowledge that there are, there's already a fabric there, and we want to make that even better. Um, at the same time, we have to res- kind of respect zoning boundaries because of what Chair Reddick said. We can't, we can't remove a use that someone already had. We we could, but it's it's going, that would be controversial and kind of a little bit beyond what we need to do in order to comply with the state rules here. So it's a balancing act. And so, yeah, I think this is a good time for me to go into the next section, which was going to be part one. Um, but I made it part two because I think it's more it's more technical, but I wanted you to know kind of the spirit with it with which we're approaching the form-based approach. Now let's get into kind of the the technical zoning issues. Uh, the proposal that I'm making to you is that there would be two different zones. Now, uh, we can talk about maps in a minute because I actually think there's kind of like two and a half zones, two base zones and one overlay zone. But what I want to do is reduce the number of housing zones that you currently have. If you had a chance to look at the tables that I sent, um, and we can spend some time on those after the presentation. I can show you that most of the, for R1, R2, 3, and 4, and even RMD, the uses are generally the same, the development standards are all the same. It's a little bit of a mystery to me why there are so many different zones. We can definitely consolidate those. So um, one of the proposals is that all of R2 becomes middle housing 1. It has all the same housing types, to your point, Tom. It, but they may be smaller. So as I, I think I've talked about this earlier that um, I guess I can't highlight, sorry. Uh, the larger sizes um homes would be in MH2, but the smaller ones would be in MH1 or R2, what is currently R2. For example, if we have townhouses, or we will have townhouses in um MH1, the smaller forms of housing, they would be limited to two attached. But in MH2, you could have up to four. That means you could have two or three or four attached. So bulkier um buildings in middle housing 2, but this the housing types are the same. So um, I think it's helpful for me to jump to the map, but let me just add, let me go over a couple of more bullet points here. Middle housing 2, I believe, would have to apply to the SRR zone as an overlay. Um, because we need to retain the recreational and commercial uses that are there. To your point, Chair Reddick, we don't, uh, we can't change the uses that are allowed. We can change the form or we can amplify the form, improve the form. So these are the maps. I think this is the, it's a good thing to talk about right now. Middle housing 1 or the smaller housing types would all be on what is currently R2, so all these orange areas here. Uh, we keep all of the uses the same, but we would change the development standards significantly to be more form-based. And it's interesting to me I think I'm happy that um, you know, that line there, for example, that's kind of the north of Laneta contact zone, right? That's kind of the south of Laneta contact zone. Now, these other areas that don't have a current pattern that's as strong uh would still be subject to the same development standards, smaller types. Now, this is for discussion, um, but it that made sense to me that R2 becomes middle housing 1. So the other um proposal, part of this proposal, is that we create a new unified zone that is middle housing 2. It has the larger housing types permitted in, so townhouses up to four attached. Um, quadplexes, say, up to four, um, four quadplexes attached, whereas in R2, quadplexes would be limited to two. So there's a new set of development standards that applies to um middle housing 2. But the land uses stay the same. R3, R4, and RMD remain. And most importantly, SRR remains, but we apply this uh middle housing 2 as an overlay to it. But I believe that um for RMD and R3 and R4, we can replace those zones with a new base zone called middle housing 2. Um, so I know this is a little hard uh maybe to to take in. Let me know if like you're not, you're not getting this. I'm not explaining it well enough. Please jump in with any clarification that you need.
I thought, was Bert gonna go?
I think Bert might be having some technical difficulties. Uh, maybe, Tom, you could go in the meantime.
Okay, so I I'm sorry, but I need a little more clarification between wh- what you're calling middle housing 1 and middle housing 2. But what I understood from the materials in our packet, th- they both have the required housing types under the law. Uh, but middle housing 2 goes farther and also allows courtyard apartments and woody walk-ups, which, and I'm not really sure what those are exactly because I don't think they're terms used in any law. Are we gonna, are we gonna define? Well, I know what a courtyard apartment is because they argued for that at the beginning, um, and I I see him around. Not really sure what a woody walk-up is.
It's a three, let's say it's a three-story, small apartment building.
Okay.
Those were the want-to-do housing types that we asked people. Um, first, we asked you, um, if you wanted to allow these want-to-do above and beyond the have-to-dos, and you said yes. Then we took those to the public and asked them where they would um like to see them or or not see them.
Okay, well, I'm one of those that that wants all those things, but I I'm also, and maybe now the time to to go on record. I want them everywhere. I I have spoken before. Uh, please allow me to to say again or tolerate me, but I I'm generally opposed to segregating the city by housing types because that has elsewhere been used as a way of segregating cities by demographics. Because um different people uh with, you know, of age or employment status or familial status or income, they want and can afford different types of housing. And so whenever you distinguish the housing types permitted in a certain area, you end up, in my view, with the risk that you're going to segregate by those classes. And and so I I'm trying to see, is is there some reason w- why we would just not have mi- middle housing 2 everywhere? Why are you carving out certain areas and saying, well, the housing's going to be different here?
The the um, I guess one of the reasons is that the woody walk-ups and the courtyard apartments were not have-to-do housing types. And, but they're want-to-do housing types, but we heard somewhat clearly at the, I mean, the community, when we asked them to place their want-to-do housing icons on the map, they generally didn't place those in the R2 area. Generally, I would say, um, there may have been some exceptions. You know, we can there's, let me just maybe go into some technical details for a minute. A wood, a courtyard apartment's just a cottage cluster attached. We allow it to be attached. That that's a simple change. We could make that change and thereby allow, you know, courtyard apartments everywhere. They would just, they may be limited to, um, as I pointed out in your packet material on page 12, they might be limited to um four cottages, or maybe we make that since they're attached, there's six. Six, you could have a courtyard apartment of six in R2, would have to meet the development standards for that area. But the woody walk-up is a little different. I mean, it is a three-story apartment building, could be three stories. Um, they generally are to be safe financially feasible. And I think that might be a push, but I'm interested in hearing what other people say.
Well, but just to to let me finish, I I
Sorry.
To some extent, this may be academic because I assume that the topography and the the marketplace and economics is largely going to control what gets built where. But I think it still is meaningful, at least to me, what the city says about what we permit where. And I I will appreciate that maybe people who attended those community forums said, well, we, you know, we like this stuff, but we like it somewhere else. We don't want it in our neighborhood. And that is the refrain that you will hear everywhere in this country when people are proposing some change in the housing. It's a good idea. We want more housing. We want more housing types. We want more affordable housing. This is all great. It's necessary someplace else. And this seems a presentation to me of, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put that into the law of our city, that these are good things to have, but not every neighborhood should have them. Well, that's my view. I probably explained it too much and too often.
Appreciate what you're saying, Tom. Uh, Lee?
Hey, thanks, Marcy. Um, I might be getting ahead of things here a little bit because I feel like we're still kind of in a conceptual stage with your presentation and the thoughts on this. That said, you've referred two or three times tonight about the uh the type 1 uh areas being typically smaller homes. And currently, there's not, there's not a lot of truth to that because those areas that are in the orange, especially at the ocean and up at the north end of town, there's a lot of homes that exceed 3,000 square feet there. And I understand that's already built. But are you talking about limiting, when you say small homes, are you talking about limiting the size of buildings in those areas?
That they, that um proposing that the entire city and all both of the proposed zones, middle housing 1 and middle housing 2, have a cap on floor area ratio of 2,500 square feet with additional floor area ratio available for additional dwelling units.
Okay, I'm kind of confused there. Floor area ratio is usually a decimal point, not 2,500 square feet or any particular square footage. It's the uh, it's an equation, the size of the building versus the size of the land. You know that, right?
Yeah.
So I'm confused. How does that, how does that parlay into your vision of how this is going to work?
That the total floor area ratio would allow larger than it uh than 2,500 square feet, but the first dwelling must be limited to 2, 2,500 square feet. So the floor area ratio might be more like 0.65.
Okay, okay. But if we're talking about a single-family residence on a single-family lot, are those, do you envision those restrictions coming into play?
Yeah, it would, it would, I mean, it's for discussion. This would apply to a single dwelling uh, that's built, you know, when this new code is adopted, not, wouldn't apply to any housing that's already built.
Yeah, I get, I get that, I get that, but I just, I want to be clear that some of the things that you're envisioning here may restrict the size of a single-family residence on a seven thousand square foot lot.
Yes, that is, that's the point. That was the point of an earlier discussion that we had. There was interest in limiting the total square footage of a house. If we leave it to uh, just what the building envelope, as it's defined by setbacks and height, and your, your diagonal plane, what that allows, uh, it, it, it's quite a lot of um, developable area. Sometimes it's in four, four thousand to forty-five hundred square feet, and it gets larger with the size of the lot, as you know.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
I think that's a really good point, though, because we discussed it earlier, but if that's something, if, if this, if the planning commission's interested in specifically not limiting the size of a single-family home, we want to hear that.
I, I think the incentive would be, if you want to build a bigger home, you need to provide housing for somebody else with it.
That's the idea, yes.
Yeah.
And uh, we, I sent material out after our last um, meeting, I believe. Uh, just to describe how the city of Portland is doing this, and what kind of results they're seeing in terms of for the wider variety of housing being provided and the affordability. Uh, it's pretty interesting that it is working in a number of cities that have taken this approach to limit the dwelling size. They are getting more units and some, the mid-sized units are more affordable. And if anyone is interested in that information, I can send it again. John?
Um, I, I would just like to go on record as I, I'm in favor of limiting the size of a single-family house, even on a bigger lot. Um, and I, I, I like the idea of incentivizing people that want to build a bigger house to build auxiliary units um, as well. So um, the, the way you, you're looking at this, and, and especially important in those context uh, areas where you have, I, I know Lee doesn't think we have small houses, but in reality, most of the R twos, there are bigger houses in there, but most of the houses are smaller. Um, and we got predominantly five thousand square foot lots, and um, the FAR generally gives you um, houses that fit the context of the current housing stock better than um, our filling up the available area inside our setbacks and height limitations. Did that make sense to you?
Yes, um.
I, I like the way you're heading, in other words.
Okay, thank you, Redd.
I'm in, I'm in favor of, and I do understand that if you have a ten thousand square foot lot and a point six five FAR, you know, you're gonna slap up a sixty-five hundred square foot house, and that's not in context with Manzanita.
In an earlier presentation, John, you probably remember, we uh, I showed three diagrams adding up the square footage that could be built into a, your current building envelope, and yeah, point six five was the typical equivalent to a floor area ratio. Point six five is what you allow in your commercial zone right now, just as a comparison, and I think that, that kind of, to your point, it's probably time to, to if we're adopting a form-based approach, it's probably time to rethink that. Fine, tune it. Not that the, the number I'm throwing out is the correct one, but should we pursue this concept is, I guess, where we're, we want to get um, some feedback at this meeting.
Right, well, my feedback is, I would like for you to pursue that. Um, and I agree with you, the point six five probably appropriate for the commercial areas along Lanita and wherever we choose to have commercial zones. Um, and that's basically what they're for. And I, I don't know how to encourage the um, live-work concept in our, I mean, I've had this discussion with Leila before. Um, and I don't know how you weave it into the housing um, uh, discussion, but I would like to see housing in uh, in our commercial zones in some auxiliary way, like, like a loft, uh, you know, a work loft sort of situation, and I know you don't want to, you know, in this context, we're not really dealing with commercial, but in the back of our minds as a group, I think the planning commission ought to be thinking about. We have housing along Lanita now, in a, mostly in a in an above uh, commercial, and, and I would like to see that concept continued. We've got a little building going up at Third and uh, and Lanita now that has a couple of residential units, and the Steeplejacks had a couple of residential units um, integrated within their commercial um, proposal. And uh, those things ought to be encouraged as well.
Thanks, John. Uh, Frank?
Yeah, Marcy, could you explain uh, how you got to twenty-five hundred, or, or capped it at twenty-five hundred? What, what's that based on?
Throwing that out as a number, it's working in the city of Portland.
Mm-hmm.
And um, also, there are other cities that we're working with that are looking at um, much smaller. And uh, and it's not, it seems more difficult. It just seems more um, of a, what we're hearing from the public is that that number is, the numbers that are smaller than twenty-five hundred are too difficult.
Yeah, it's very limiting. I mean, you know, that, it, it certainly would ex- uh, exclude larger families from being able to build a house that would work for them. I mean, if you have five kids, two parents and a mother-in-law living there, what are you supposed to do in twenty-five hundred square feet?
Just for context, like an average uh, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home with two-car garage is about twenty-two, twenty-three hundred square feet.
Yeah, and that's tight.
Right, so it's a number that I'm putting out there because it's worked out in some places, but it's certainly um, to discuss. Like, number one, do we want to pursue this idea I'm hearing from some people? Yes. Number two, what should the number be? We probably need, if you're, you tell us you want to pursue this, we probably need to show you some three-dimensional models of what would be possible, what you currently have, whi- which you've actually already done. We've modeled a lot of the housing s- sizes that you currently have. They're large, um, generally speaking. They take advantage of most of the building envelope that's provided. Um, so somewhere in there, we need to find the right number for.
And, and Marcy, does this work if you scale it based on the lot size, even though you'll have a cap eventually, e- let's say the top is three thousand square feet, uh, but it's scaled based on the lot size? If you made a minimum lot size, you can build up this, uh, the next size up, you can build just slightly bigger, or is it, you know, because this sounds like one-size-fits-all?
Yeah, it, that's the way most cities are, are applying it, is a one, the, the first dwelling is a, it's one-size-fits-all. If you have a larger lot, though, I mean, in that, if you adopt that philosophy, you could build additional dwelling units. If you have a larger lot, you can build more additional dwelling units. That's the way that approach works.
So when you say additional, what does that include? Everything, are there, are not, are they non-attached, or?
They can be whatever middle housing that is allowed, um, in whatever form-based approach says. So say you're in a, in the R two zone, and say that we decide these are the smaller townhouse or quadplex, so quadplex would be only two attached. You could still have four units, but only two could be attached, the, they have to be separated. Only, if you have a townhouse, you can only have two attached. Um, in this zone, if the twenty-five hundred square foot is applied to the first dwelling, and you add another dwelling in it, you could go up to your maximum floor area ratio that's allowed by your lot, and that, as you know, is very gonna be greater, because your lot size is greater. Um, until you reach that upper limit, that may be an additional couple of plexes, and maybe another townhouse, you know, or two.
Got you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, Karen?
Um, yeah, I, just to um, answer your question, I am in agreement that a um, FAR ratio would be a good thing to um, impose based on the, you know, overall lot sizes you were just saying. I don't know what the number is, but I'd like us to keep that in consideration. Um, that maybe, once we hear from the rest of the community, there may be a different number that makes more sense. Um, but I'd like, I'd like us to continue kind of on that path. And as far as um, to kind of respond to Tom's question about not allowing all types in all zones, I think that the point at this moment is that most of the lot sizes in the current R two zone, at least north of Lanita, um, and closer to the beach, the lot sizes are fairly small, so putting a three-story apartment building would require someone to aggregate several lots together in order to be able to accomplish that in the, you know, i- in the way that the city is currently built out. There aren't very many places for that, but I think that um, if we apply that FAR to that kind of development, I, I think that someone could find a way to put, you know, a three-story apartment building, small, um, in the R, the current R two zone. Um, so I, I wouldn't want us to completely eliminate any particular housing type, but the standards would have to be fairly strict in order for someone to, to build a, you know, that ma- a, a massive building in a neighborhood where every, everything else is quite small. So I, I'd like us just to kind of keep open to those ideas, not exclude anything yet. Um, until we kind of, you know, I, I see this as refine, refining and refining and refining. So I'm, I'm with you on both of those concepts.
So if I could just um, summarize what I'm hearing from you on the, the so-called woody walkups or the three-story apartments, um, you're you're interested in seeing us look into that those might be allowed on a aggregated lot. Um, with issues of bulk um, taken into account, is, is that a?
Yeah, so it's similar to the way you're thinking about a townhouse, um, maybe smaller apartments.
Right.
Or um, you know, a, a smaller um,
Quarter size.
Apartment, yes, um, so that it's not uh, completely out of step with the rest of the neighborhood, but that it allows for um, you know, it, it could be just a bunch of studio, you know, very, uh, building with a bunch of studio apartments for people that, you know, live and work here without, without families.
Right, yeah, okay, I, I hear you. That's a really nice idea. Okay.
I don't know whether it's workable, but I'd, I'd like us, not, not to exclude it quite yet from the.
We can look into it, okay.
I don't know what's practical either. I'm, I'm not a practical person, so.
Uh, Tom?
If, if we're not gonna allow a three-story woody walk-up, a three-story apartment in a certain area, then it seems to me we absolutely have to put some restriction on the size of the single-family dwelling that we'll allow there. I mean, I, it would be completely incongruous for me to say, we're not gonna allow this building that will house six people of low income, but we're gonna allow one family to build a house for themselves of similar size at the same location. So I, I i- if we're gonna have those restrictions, I'm, I'm all in favor of some size footprint restriction. Uh, but I, I have to tell you, it's hard for me to not being an architect or in the trade or anything, to imagine what twenty-five hundred square feet, what, what that looks like. I don't even know what my own place is. If, if there's something you could like the Little Apple, is that bigger than twenty-five hundred square feet? Anybody know? I, I have to get.
It's a single story, right? It's a single-story building?
Yeah, the little app, the little small grocery store in the middle of town. What, what's that footprint?
Oh, probably fifty by eighty, just guessing. So, you know, you're, you're well over twenty-five hundred square feet there.
Okay. Well, that helps.
That's a guess.
What does that tell us, though, Tom, that if the Little Apple is four thousand, about four thousand square feet, um?
I'm, I'm comfortable with twenty-five or three, if we need to accommodate things. I, I um, what I hear and see, what I feel most disconcerting about and hear from other people is when they look around town and they see some gargantuan, out-of-scale house going in. There's one near where I live, where in five years, I've never seen it occupied. It's just this big, massive structure, a single-family home. Um, I don't know why we would want to encourage more building of that size and, and discourage smaller, more affordable structures that would accommodate more people.
Right. Okay, good, noted. Um, John, and then Bert, and then I'm gonna say that we should move on to the next topic. John, what happened to John?
Sorry, I'm glad you didn't hear what I said right before I unmuted. Um, Tom, well, first of all, Marcy, let me, uh, just to be clear, the woody walk-up is not mandated by the state, is that correct?
Correct, it's a want-to-do.
It's a want-to-do, okay. I'm in favor of the concept of um, multiple units in the R two zone. The woody, a three-story building, first of all, I don't think we can do it under the twenty-eight feet height restriction that we currently have, and I, are we thinking about increasing that, Marcy, or it, would that be only for um, in, increasing it to the thirty-three or whatever, for the uh, or thirty-four for low-income housing that the state does require us to do, correct?
Wait, I, I think I got, I, I missed something there between where you started and where you ended your question.
I probably missed, I probably skipped something as well, but um, are we, are we thinking we will still leave our current twenty-eight feet or twenty-eight-six building height limit in the R one or R two zone, or, or in the, the new m- multi-housing one zone?
Well, I think it was in the um, report, but I, I proposed that you increase the height limit to thirty, I think it was thirty, by five feet from what it is, to thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay.
Right, and.
Which is what the state says we need to do if we're going to do um, okay, we just, we just did it a month ago. Um, we went to thirty-three or thirty-four as the state mandated, and then we added three feet to that to get to thirty-seven, which allows nine feet floor-to-floor or something to that effect. I, I'm probably getting the. or something to that effect. I, I'm probably getting the numbers all wrong.
But you upped the height allowance for the um, apartment project that you just approved, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and so what I would like to do is have that height apply everywhere.
Um, even the.
Height.
Even, a- a- and you would, you would think that even in the context Area A or one, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a proposal, it's just, it's for discussion.
Okay.
But it was one of the proposals that was made in the concept report.
Well, i- i- in our meeting last, uh, uh, our February meeting, there were two height limits that we discussed. One was the uh, state requirement that we have to allow up, I believe it was thirty-three feet.
Thirty-four point something.
Okay, thank you, uh, thirty-four point something for um, housing that meets the low-income requirement. And I'm saying low income, but I think everybody.
Middle housing.
Thank you, although I don't think, was it middle housing or?
No, I think it was for the low-income.
It was for a low-income, that's what I think too, yeah, that's what I think, Marcy. Um, so there's that number, which is what you're proposing, we increase our height limit to. Um, I, I'd be okay with that, I think, um.
So just, can I just clarify, it's, so the state allows for a ten percent increase in height if it's, if they use the tax credits. So that's what happened in that case. So um, what I, well, I guess what I'm saying is if, if we change the zoning to be that height, the state still would allow a ten percent on top of whatever we allow, right, Marcy?
Just for the low-income.
Just for the low-income, thank you, thank you, yeah.
And, and that would be, uh, that is part of the state requirement, right?
But not related to this project necessarily, because it's about, this project is about middle housing, and that sounds like. So um, Scott brings up an interesting little tangle, you know, to consider, which is that if we were to increase the height in the zone to, say, thirty-four point something or thirty-five feet, to allow a nine-foot floor-to-floor, which is a, you know, good for housing generally, middle housing or low-income housing, tax credit housing, all kinds of housing, that's a, a height that you'd probably want to have. But I guess what you're saying, Scott, is that a low-income housing tax credit would be able to apply for a ten percent even greater than that. Now, they may not even apply for that because it wouldn't be necessary and it would be overly expensive. I mean, there would maybe some
Exactly.
Usability limitation built in, but um, yeah, that's where that stands.
That's exactly why the applicant asked for that height, is for nine-foot ceilings, Marcy, so you nailed it. And they wouldn't have to because it would already be allowed.
Then they would be allowed to do an additional ten percent had they, if they choose to do that. I'm, I'm not concerned about the um, low-income housing and uh, a thirty-four point something height limit. I think that's fine. I'm more concerned with somebody that wants to push the limit of the FAR and come in there and build a huge house with a huge volume and, and we, the city, wouldn't be gaining any housing, it would be a single-family house. Um, and it would probably be, as uh, Tom said, unoccupied eighty percent of the time. Um, if we're going to allow that kind of height limit, I would like to see us as a city get some bang for the buck and get some um, housing that we need. Uh, low-income or middle-income housing, so, for what it's worth.
Yep, that sounds great. All right, Bert, to you.
Okay, uh, boy, that was a good discussion, lots of, lots of information. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of uh, of the twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, I think uh, as you refine it, uh, you know, maybe if we're trying to get more housing that, uh, you know, people can afford, then maybe there's a, a formula of, uh, if you do a certain-sized unit, you can go to a larger house uh, on the lot, or something to encourage the construction of that, actually. Uh, incentivize it, you know, and, but, but generally speaking, maybe not over, you know, three thousand square feet or something. Uh, I think the real challenge we have, and I'm, I'm also in favor of woody walk-ups kind of everywhere, but I'm not in favor of woody walk-ups that don't have a pretty regulated form-based strategy to them, so they fit, you know, our city. And uh, I think, uh, you know, a woody walk-up that's a square box, that's got a flat roof, uh, is not gonna be accepted as well as a woody walk-up that has a sloped roof and it has wood siding and, you know, has some degree of modulation on it. Uh, and so I think it's really important for us to get into that form-based strategy uh, and uh, you know, make that the, the really goal of this, uh, so that we, we get the outcomes that we're, we're looking for. Um, the uh, and, and I, that, that's why I think there, there might be some areas in the city where a woody walk-up works fine if it's gonna fit into the neighborhood. I mean, but there's houses now that don't fit the neighborhood, and they're just single-family houses. So it's more about the design and form and materials and textures and things like that, I believe. Um, let's see, what else? I do think uh, uh, on the height, you know, uh, once again, I, I know we're kind of tied to the, the housing initiative, but, but stepping back again, you know, in our commercial areas, I think that uh, uh, once again, it's based upon a form-based strategy. I, I think there, uh, as we continue with our uh, city and the growth of our city, that taking a look at the height in, in those zones is important also. So um, anyway, I, I think, I think you're on the right track. I do have one quick question before my internet went haywire. It's in the map that we're looking at right now. Uh, you, in the middle housing two zone, you, you ha- you have two maps, and I'm a little confused. Is it really the left map in that center map? That's what you're describing as the MH two zone?
There's, there's two options I feel that we have to keep open. One is that um, MH two applies as a new base zone to this whole area that's marked yellow. But another option, which I think is, we probably will wind up with this one, is where the development standards of MH two apply to the land uses of SRR.
Got it.
The land uses in SRR include some uses that are not allowed anywhere else, recreational golf course and commercial, for example. And we, w- we don't wanna change that, so.
Got it, okay.
All right, Brad, it's your turn.
Just wanna make sure that I'm understanding the premise here on the square footage and size. Are we, or use, is the premise that s- less square footage is more affordable?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I would.
Really smaller houses.
I would push back on that though, because I don't, I think we're making an assumption then that something is smaller is ness- is an absolute going to be a less price tag, and I would argue that that's not necessarily going to be an accurate outcome. So I'm just curious, I just wanted to make sure that that is what you're tying, like twenty-five hundred square foot, for example, is gonna be more affordable than something that's for arguments like three thousand or thirty-five hundred?
Um, well, I've been working on this issue for middle housing for, like, twenty years, and there's a lot of data now that we have after House Bill two thousand and one has gone into effect and cities have adopted it. And Portland is a very good example and has done a lot of tracking. Um, I mean, generally, smaller units are less expensive, more units on a lot are less expensive overall. Um, because land is expensive and the more you get on a lot, the less expensive each unit is. But Portland has actually uh, measured the effect of a s- uh, limitation on how, primary first dwelling, and they've seen an increase in the number of middle housing units that they're getting. They've seen quadplexes and cottage clusters are the, now the predominant permit type that they see as a result of this limitation, and they're also seeing, I think, uh, the latest figures were about three hundred thousand dollars less in sales price. So I can share this information with you, it's really recent from Portland. Um, and then that's Portland, you know, you could say that that's Portland, that's not Manzanita. Manzanita is subject to some really different pressures because you're a coast city, coastal city, uh, with a lot of um, second homes and um, but I still think it's a, it's a rule that may apply as we increase the housing supply. That smaller houses are going to be less expensive.
The housing supply, are we assuming that that's being driven by individual economics or, or a developer or somebody coming in and, and building to scale volume?
You actually are gonna have both situations here. What we're trying to do, I think, in the, wh- what I imagine happening in the M one zone mostly is infill. And that property owners, homeowners undertake themselves. But in the SRR and uh, some of the R two zones that are, like, over here, um, you may actually see larger develop, I know, I know you will see um, more of a, a new development that takes advantage of these middle housing and smaller house allowances.
Uh, Marcy, just let me add to that. I think Brad is right that for any individual lot, the size of the house doesn't necessarily determine the price of it. But what I've found, uh, in my neighborhood and in Portland is that if you have smaller-sized dwellings, you get more of them. Um, and and that adds to the supply, which is one of the primary determinants of, of price overall. If, you know, if we had in these zones, you know, big lots and we allowed big houses, you are gonna have expensive houses. If you can reduce the size of the houses, many of those lots will be subdivided and they'll build multiple dwellings there instead of just one, and, and the dwellings are likely to be cheap because they're smaller, but they will also add to the aggregate supply throughout the whole city, and that will help reduce prices overall.
Brad, I, I, I think one of the keys is the scale of some of the housing and the scale of Manzanita. And so uh, on, on my street, there's a, a house that just doesn't fit the neighborhood. And uh, you know, it, it's a huge, filled out the whole lot, the setback lines, you know, up to the height limit with the flat roof, and it just doesn't fit. And uh, I think by tailoring the scale of the house, it's still incentivizing, you know, the addition of affordable units, uh, with an increase in area or something, uh, is, is a way to get more units, uh, and then to have that form-based code to have it to be designed so it fits the neighborhood. And I, I think it's a design challenge, uh, through a form-based code that can get us to better outcomes.
Uh, though, adding density, Bert, to that, your, your, your thoughts, isn't density going to be a, a larger driver, the more, you know, units you can build?
Well, I think, I think if uh, uh, you know, people will just build a, a twenty-five hundred square foot on a lot, you know, a lot of people will. But uh, you know, I think you, if you get uh, an incentive-based strategy, if somebody wants to build a three thousand square foot lot and they need to include a five hundred square foot, uh, you know, one-bedroom or studio apartment, uh, to get to that number, you'll get a bigger building, but if it's a form-based strategy, then you'll incentivize the inclusion of that uh, lower-priced housing. I, I think that's what the whole effort here is, is to try to to, throughout our city, to get more smaller-scale units and more affordable housing to happen throughout the city. And uh, it, it's certainly happening in Portland and happening in Seattle dramatically, actually, where uh, there's a lot of uh, more affordable housing getting generated. Still not at the levels that we need to, but uh, you know, for a young family or something, there's, there's more options now.
We have a fixed amount of buildable area in town. In order to get more housing, the density has to go up and the uh, unit per density has to go up as well. In other words, if you've got twenty-five hundred square feet, for the town's sake, we would be better with two twelve hundred square foot houses than we would be with one twenty-five hundred square foot house, because while it m- may cost the same to build two twelve hu- probably costs a little bit more to build two twelve hundred square foot houses, each of those houses is gonna cost considerably less than a twenty-five hundred square foot house, and that's our goal, uh, from a, a, from a housing numbers standpoint and from a cost standpoint.
At the, sorry for jumping in. At the end of my street, there is a house, uh, I've never seen anyone there in years. It's in complete disrepair. It, it seems to me to be composting on site. Um, somebody could buy that lot, tear down the house and, and build something, and it could be, you know, a, a three thousand square foot house. I don't know, whatever, a big, huge house that would be a little out of scale with the neighborhood, w- w- um, and fine. Okay, but what, what I would prefer, what I think would be better for the city is if it got turned into three smaller dwellings that would be uh, more affordable and perhaps owned and occupied by somebody who is not a non-resident but lives in the community and works here and needs someplace to live and work. Um, and I, I, I wanna, I would hope we move in that direction. And if, and the way to get there seems to me to be, to allow those housing types and also to restrict, incentivize it by restricting the size of the, the house that could be built on that lot.
Marcy, I, I know you wanted to, to move on, but I, I have a, just a quick question that may, we can think about another day, but while we're looking at the um, MH two map, there are two areas um, that are now considered R two but are largely vacant. And I'm wondering if they should be upzoned to middle housing two. And that's the square area, yeah, that one right there, and then the long one that uh, is adjacent to Bayside Gardens. And I know there's a cemetery in there that's not gonna be buildable, but there's quite a bit of other land that could be um, used for a larger um, development type. And I'm just wondering, I, I'd like for us to think about whether upzoning that area, uh, at least I think of it as upzoning, if you allow more, allow more and larger developments, um, that, if that might be appropriate.
Marcy, that's absolutely in line with all the discussion we had at our, those, well, certainly the ones south of the Carlton Place. Um, many people identified that as an area for multi-housing or a, a bare minimum uh, M two housing, so I completely agree with uh, Karen on that issue. The other R two piece, um.
Are you talking about this one right here?
I am, that's the one I'm currently talking about. The other piece um, was the one south, but then, no, over.
This one?
That was the first piece I talked about, and that one was identified by many people in our community meeting as being a good place for um, mm, mm, housing beyond single-family, you know, uh,
Yeah.
Um, m- middle housing in, in whichever form, um. um, middle housing in, in whichever form it takes. And the other R2 piece you noted, I believe, is the piece that probably half of that already has been dedicated to low income or middle income housing per the owners of that development. So.
So am I hearing that all that these three R2s could be considered for MH2?
I think that's what Karen said, and I agree.
Okay. All right. So, um, thank you for your questions and discussion about this topic. I'm going to move on to, um, the land division piece now. We have two more concepts to cover. And, uh, as I mentioned with your packet material last week, an appendix item came. It was the, uh, land division ordinance. So I'm going to cover this. I don't have so many diagrams to talk to about this one. It's more about procedures really, but I'll go through the facts that we wanted to communicate with that appendix. This, the new land division ordinance that came as appendix and with your packet would entirely replace your current subdivision ordinance language. Um, and the reason that we want to rewrite your subdivision ordinance, worked with, been working with Walt Wendelaski on this, um, would be to allow for some of the things that you talked about that aren't currently permitted, except through a planned unit development type procedure. That such as, um, shared driveways, partial or full alleys, internal or flag lots, uh, small lots in general, uh, common greens. Um, so those are all kind of tracts that the only way that you could get them today, say you wanted a common green surrounded by a, um, courtyard housing, say courtyard apartments. The only way you could do that would be if you had a planned unit development. So we want, we really want to make these smaller housing types more feasible all the way to the very, very end through the land division process. So that's why we kind of went the extra mile to include a new subdivision ordinance. And what, um, ordinance 95.5 or this new land division ordinance is about processing the land divisions. Whereas our 95.4, the development, um, standards that we're talking about, that's where the standards for the tracts and lots would be, such as minimum dimensions, say. And we would be coordinating type one, two, and three procedures across both, um, the land division and the development ordinance. Everyone with me so far? Okay. Um, so I would really encourage you to read it. I think it's a 60 page long document or something, but like, um, please, if you have any comments between, within the next week, if you could get those to me, any questions or comments? Um, so two specific standards that, uh, are about land division, but like I just mentioned, they would be in 95.4 because they're about a minimum dimensions or dimensional standards. I want to discuss them with you right now. And one is eliminate the minimum lot width and depth requirements. Cause, um, they don't make sense. You actually have very few lots that meet your minimum requirement. So minimum widths and depths is unnecessarily complicating. And, uh, so we would just strike those. And then another would be to institute a new minimum lot size of 1,250 square feet. That would be your new minimum. Now, what width it is, what depth length it is, that we don't care. The current standard you have is 5,000 square feet and 2,500 square feet is required per dwelling unit. That's the way your code reads right now. So my questions to you are, let me just see. Do, should we move forward with this approach to the land division ordinance? Should we move forward with this, uh, with these new types of tracts and lots? And should, can we move forward with these two specific standards? Lee, Lee?
Thanks, Marcy. I think, uh, definitely some consideration was given, and I really appreciate that for minimum lot sizes. Um, it's been out of date for a long time. What you're proposing is right up my, uh, right up my alley. I like it.
Thanks.
I, I do, I, I have a little issue. As you pointed out, the, uh, minimum lot sizes specifically in 95.4 are, uh, a little out of date. But can we, can we think of a way that we can do a minimum width and length and 1,250 square feet? I'm trying to think of an instance where somebody could end up with a really goofy lot size and put something on there that nobody would want. I know we've got setbacks to deal with and we've got fire code to deal with, but I just want to make sure that we're not limiting opportunities by saying, uh, just a, a minimum lot size and not a minimum width or, or length. So just give that some thought if you would. You don't, you don't need to comment on it now.
Okay, great. Thanks. Brad?
Is the, I'm not sure how to best ask this on the 1,250, Marcy. So I'll ask it a couple of different ways. Is, is the 1,250 aspirational or a reality based?
It, um, well, uh, I'm not sure how to answer that. It's, um, I'll start with the fact that we're required to allow 2,500 square foot lots for our have to do housing types everywhere. That is a requirement. So we have to go down to 2,500 square feet for 10.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then in a lot of cities where we've been doing this work, they want to go smaller. They want to have a cottage, you know, in, in cottage cluster that could actually be subdivided into individual ownable lots, cottages each on their own lot with a common tract as a separate tract. They would like to build that into their land division rules and their development code. So that seems to work for a lot of cities.
Is there, are, are there good examples of a, not talking about in Manzanita, but in your experience, of 1,250 square foot lots that actually have, um, livable, meaningful housing on them?
Well, actually, if you look at classic cottages in Manzanita right now, a few of those homes are on very small lots. They're on separate, separate sellable lots. Most of it, I believe, is a condominium, though.
I think it was condoed. It, it's a condominium development, I, I believe. You, you, you might be right, but that's, um, across how many different, I mean, that's across an acre too, if I'm not mistaken, right?
It's, I think it's about 24 cottages on a couple of acres, yeah.
Are, are you, is the 1,250 though? I'm just trying to better understand. Would it be applied for example? And this is maybe not a good example, but I'll, I'll use it. Maybe you can help me better understand then. If you have a 5,000 square foot lot and somebody says, okay, I'm going to go put four units on it to maximize density. I'm going to use that as an example for a second. I can, maybe I need to enlarge yours to, to, to look at that. Is that what would be proposed then?
Well, this, so this is a, this is one of the have to do housing types. And this is an illustration from the state's, um, model code for cottage cluster, cottage clusters. Um, a common courtyard is required. Um, certain number of square feet from each dwelling unit are, you know, are required to create that. And a certain amount of, um, there are requirements for frontage and orientation for that. But in an expedited middle housing land division, which we're trying to create a path for in your land division, each one of these could become subdivided as long as this tract served for utilities, as long as it met a minimum, met a minimum width at where it met the street. And, um, for each, uh, utility easement to go, to fit into. So we would be setting that standard through the land division.
But would you be set, would we be setting a standard where that?
This lot could be created.
You would, that for the 1,250 to work, you need a minimum lot size of X. It's, it's not going to work on a, in other words, it's not going to work where somebody's taking a 5,000 square foot lot. And this is, I'm asking it as a question, just to better understand. And then put, trying to put three or four. And then basically, I'm not suggesting replat it because that wouldn't work, but, or it wouldn't pencil out. But is there, to, to do the 1,250, do you need really 20,000 square feet to get enough density and housing units on it to make it work? Is there a bare minimum lot size?
Can I jump Marcy on that one? Sorry to interrupt you, Brad. I just was thinking about this and I think part of this too goes back to historical plating. A lot of the historical plating that was done were 50 by 25 foot lots. So there's those skinny lots, you'll see that all across the Oregon, the nation. And many of the 5,000 square foot lots were originally platted as for 1,250 square foot lots. And you'll see people actually go back and subdivide those back into 1,250 square feet and build single family homes on those. And Marcy has a pretty good example of what we call skinny homes. So you'll see those throughout on 25 by 50 foot lots with single family homes with three foot setback on either side. So they're skinny, but they can be done. So I think you could potentially develop a single 1,250, uh, 50 square foot lot, if that's your question. They can't, that can be done.
I think we might also be talking about net versus gross.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we are, this is a net lot size, a net lot. This doesn't include tracts for utilities or.
So that's not gross. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That helps a little.
Helps a little. Okay. Maybe I can let, um, John and Bert go and that might offer some additional light on this issue.
Well, two, I have two questions. One is, are we thinking to do a 1,250 square foot lot? You would have to probably, um, minimize your setback requirements. And right now we have, you know, five and eight, uh, on the sides and 20 and 10 in the back. You don't have a 1,200, you don't have a 1,250 square foot lot anymore. You can build a five foot by 10 foot house on it, but, um, um, so I assume we're going to, uh, change the setback as part of the form based housing package in general. Second, are we looking at increasing our density? Does this, does this increase our, our density?
This would increase the density.
Adding, um, smaller, right now, I, I can't remember exactly what it is, but it's, you know, a certain number of units per acre. Um, I think it, well, I don't know if it's seven or multiple of seven or something, but, um, we would be increasing that, correct?
Yes, for sure. And in some of these smaller lot develop, development, housing types that lend themselves to smaller lights, like the cottage cluster.
Right.
Um, interestingly, in the state's code, this does not, this cannot have a density limitation on it. I mean, this is a true form based code kind of product. Like it's got a shape and, uh, it has a certain amount of orientation and common tract built into the design. You have to meet all these requirements. It's each of these cottages can only be 900 square feet on average. So some could be smaller, some could be larger. It has a height limit. It has a minimum number and minimum, um, minimum spacing between. But the density.
It does not have a specific density.
No, because all these other physical factors, uh, limit, create
I love it.
a self-limiting density. It's a true form based code approach.
I'm on board with that.
And Marcy, that goes for the setbacks too. That's the advantage of the form base is you get away from the, the setback and the, and the unit. So it's less about density and setback and more about FAR.
You still have the building code to deal with and the, you know, the area between, um, structures. But, uh, we will meet all that with our form based, uh, criteria.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And that's, I, I like where we're headed.
Um, Bert and then Karen? And then, I'm sorry, but I want to move to the house, to the street so we can talk about that before we get done.
Marcy, this is a very big meal, so we're, we're taking. Well, uh, I think we need to lower the lot size, obviously. And so 1,250, that sounds good to me. I don't know what the right size is. But since that puts four lots on a regular Manzanita lot, that makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, two things is that we're not precluding zero lot line housing. Uh, you know, or shared wall, common walls that will actually be two lots. Uh, and, and it's really important that we facilitate ownership. And condominium ownership is increasingly very difficult and more complicated to get insurance and all sorts of other things. And so, uh, we should be very intentional to try to make sure that we can, uh, encourage homeownership on small lots. So that's kind of the, the baseline. And then I, I do have a question. Uh, let's say there's a, uh, 1,250 square foot lot. I don't think we should preclude that there couldn't be two units on that 1,250 square foot lots. You know, uh, one on one floor and one on another floor. And maybe somebody owns one and, and rents the other or something like that. So, um, the lot side, I guess that's a question to you. Uh, in a form based code, you know, it doesn't really matter how many units you have in the thing, but it's really about the, the scale and the rhythm and the texture and stuff like that. So let's say in this cottage cluster, uh, there's eight units. Uh, would we be limited to having only eight units? Or if it met the same form requirements, could there be eight, uh, you know, 16 units there?
So on page, um, something of your, of the document that I sent to you last week, I listed at page 12 that, um, in the small forms, uh, middle housing, which is MH1, I proposed that cottage clusters would be limited to four cottages. But in, um, the middle housing two, they would not be limited. They, you do have to have a certain number of cottages around a court, around a common green to meet the state standard. So, um, but the, the idea there was just small cottage cluster, large cottage cluster. Now, I don't know how you feel about that, but that was sticking with this recipe of a small forms, smaller housing, smaller forms of the same housing types in MH1.
Well, well, uh, we just approved in just south of Lenita, probably a 24 or 30 unit kind of cottage cluster thing. Uh, and, uh, I think it's going to, you know, fit pretty well. So, um, I don't know if the number is as critical as just having the cottages.
Okay, so we'll expect more exploration of that issue in the next round. Um, Karen?
Um, I, um, I'm a little bit confused. You talk about an appendix that has, um, more information about the land division. And I'm not sure what document that is. I don't, i- if it's something that we just received today, I can't comment on it because I haven't even opened it yet. Um, but I am generally in agreement that the, um, what we're calling the subdivision ordinance, uh, you know, the land division ordinance needs to go hand in hand with the, um, uh, just the general, um, I guess we're not calling it a zoning ordinance anymore, but are, you know, whatever that is, 95.4, whatever that turns into, they need to, they need to be hand in hand. I'm generally in agreement with your, um, minimum lot size of 1,250 square feet. I, I think that's reasonable, bearing in mind the things that Bert mentioned about zero lot lines and things like that to make sure that we don't preclude, um, people being able to build. to make sure that we don't preclude, um, people being able to build equity in a tiny lot. Now, that's seems important to me. Um, and I don't remember what the other thing you were asking for was in this discussion, but, um, uh, shoot, having to do with the division ordinance.
It was about, um, eliminating minimum lot, lot width and depth.
Oh yeah. Okay, fine. Yeah. No worries. Keep going. Yes.
Um, so the land division was appendix, one of two appendices that you got last week with your packet material. At least I think that you did. And there was a, the results, a one-page results of the housing survey. And then there was the 60-page-long land division ordinance. So let us know if that didn't, if you would like to get that again.
I don't remember seeing any of that, so.
We'll get it to you again. We'll send it up again. All right. So last, um, last course, to use Bert's, uh, little very large meal here, um. So I want to talk, can, first of all, we're seven minutes till, do we mind, can people allow us to go five minutes over?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I want to talk about parking, but not the way we usually talk about it, which is that, yes, we do have to um, change the requirements for parking. Right now you require two parking spaces per dwelling unit and you require them on the lot of the dwelling. So those need to change. That's not a want to do, that's a have to do per the state. However, I do think that, um, we can find places to park on streets. And I'd like to talk about that. You have, you know, abundance of local streets, some of which are paved, some of which are not. Um, and you have this kind of organic edge treatment that changes from street to street, from context to context. Even in the new, newest development, you still don't have, um, you know, a fixed edge. It's the rolled curb. You don't have curbs. You don't have sidewalks. You have these, um, in context area A and B, you have very informal shared streets. So what I would like to do is, um, look at actually using this edge space, which is, in some cases, that's a little bit of the front yard. And some of it, it's probably a little bit of the, the right of way. It's a little bit of both. So this is kind of like, let's pitch in some private property and some right of way. And let's make some parking space on the street and let's not pave, let's not add paving to your lots. Because we just don't need more paving in Manzanita. Um, but you see that a lot of people use this space to park head in. Um, you'll also see that people use it to park parallel, you know, the, it's, uh, it's used for a lot of different things. It's used for planting, et cetera. Um, even up here, so this is the Highlands area that I was talking about. We don't have a fixed curb. We don't have a sidewalk. We have this area that could easily be used for parking. Um, but there's lots of parking in garages up here, so. But if we're adding units, we're going to want to add parking spaces. So is there a way that we could look at some of these designs? So let me just walk you through some of these. This is, uh, taking a local street. So say that this is the edge of the right of way where the green and the white meet. And we actually allow that landscaped area to stick out and, but part of it is for parking. Um, we even maybe have an irregular, uh, shape to this. Like maybe this, this first property owner builds it out to here and they have head in parking here and they have parallel parking here. Um, this might be a treatment that is done to a whole street at once by a one developer, say. And this might happen in the newer area that's being redeveloped from the ground up. Um, these might be more infill lot by lot approaches. Um, say this lot, um, builds a, a deeper, um, they build the driveway kind of into the landscape verge area. Uh, I use this example right here. Here's one in context area A, um, make that a little bit bigger for you. And, um, so there's, this is very similar to the diagram shown above where we're using a little bit of the right of way. I think that's probably the right of way and that's probably the property line right there. But we're creating a parking space that's shared. You could even have, um, this be a tandem. You could even add a parallel parking space here. And then third over on this design is just, um, a sidewalk on one side, which is also possible. But otherwise, these are generally shared streets. So these are different ways of using the existing street space that you have for parking. And you already have a lot of this going on. This is some examples from, um, classic street cottages. You know, you have, there is parking that takes place off of the shared, off of this alley. There's no curb. There's a parallel parking space there. Um, there are a lot of places like Seabrook, Washington that do this. Uh, also having a shared, um, a parking verge. In this case, they use clam oyster shells as their, uh, material there. And also, this is in, one of my favorite examples in Lake Oswego, where there's actually a sidewalk um, behind these bushes here. But, um, there's, uh, parking pockets tucked into this landscaped area. And these can also be treating stormwater while they're there. So my question is, what do people think of these alternative designs? Should we pursue these? If we do, we'll need to add them to the land division ordinance procedures and the standards. And we may even need to, um, look at the TSP a little more closely. Tom?
Uh, I'm in favor of reducing all parking requirements in all directions. I, the, the less we require onsite, uh, the better. If we can eliminate it for uh, accessory dwelling units, um, great. I think there is ample on-street parking potential. And so if we don't make requirements for onsite parking, we could have more room there for housing. And I like all of the options that you've just presented.
Thank you. Great. Others?
Karen? Got my hand up. Um, yeah, I agree with Tom that, um, these alternative areas are, um, good. However, not all of the streets in Manzanita are built on the center line as platted. There's a lot of places where, um, the streets were half-developed when one side of the street was built. And then the other side got built and they platted, you know, they developed the rest of the street. And it's, our, our center lines aren't perfect. Um, so I think that we have to think about that going forward, especially as we're infilling. Um, that we make sure that we know that public property, you know, the easement areas should be parkable. Um, the other issue I think is going to need to be just a lot of educating, um, the public that street parking is for everybody. And you can't put chairs out on the street in the easement uh, when the farmer's market is going on to prevent people from parking in front of your house. So it's just, um, if we're going to allow, um, less parking onsite, then we have to allow more parking on the street and everybody has to be on board with it. That's my comment.
Thank you. John?
I, um, right now, uh, well, first of all, let me say, I, I, I think two onsite parking spaces per dwelling unit is probably more than we need. Um, there are, I'm sure there are houses that, you know, have five cars here at one time. And there are houses that sit, but part of our issue is we've got houses that have occupation only about 80% of the time. Um, if we, I don't know how you can allow parking in somebody's driveway when they're not there, but it may be worth some thought. Um, Marcy, are you asking us to approve all three of those concepts? Or are you just going to study those and we're going to pick one?
I think they all have to be possible. Um, I think you're going to need options. But I, the goal is to build in the allowance for these into your, um, standards and your.
Okay. Well, as long as we have some flexibility, I, it seems, um, I, I wouldn't like to see on an infill project, a requirement to put a sidewalk in when houses in either direction don't have them and are never going to have them. Um, so uh, I like the, I, I kind of like what we have now. It's just, we need to make sure that shared parking, uh, just like the shared right of way is part of our city concept. Um, anybody can park parallel on the side of the street where it's possible. Um, I agree with Karen. You shouldn't be able to put a cone or a chair or something, or even an obnoxious sign up in front of your house saying, this parking is for me. Um, we have to, as a community, share those spaces. Um, so, uh, all three of these concepts that you've shown Marcy are good. I just, like I said, I probably like the one in the middle the best because I, I just don't see us, I mean, maybe in new developments like Highlands or someplace like that, you can put in a sidewalk, uh, but certainly not in the bulk of the areas that already have development. And all we're going to do is infill. Seems silly to try to force somebody to put a sidewalk in there.
Okay. Good feedback. Thanks, John. Um, Bert?
Yeah, real quick, looks good to me, you know, uh, I do agree with John. You know, the sidewalk stuff, it just isn't the nature. Uh, we do need them some places, uh, high intensity zones like Main Street, you know, Lina and maybe a few others. Uh, I think that one thing to keep in mind is, uh, there might be a rhythm or the maximum quantity of head in, uh, parking that you would have on a street. Maybe. I think that's worthy of conversation. Uh, or maybe it's allowed on one side or, you know, so much spacing every so often or something, just so that's, it, it isn't a hundred percent a parking lot, you know, feel like a parking lot. Uh, just a, a thought. Uh, but yeah, I think this is a good direction. I think the, the other really key thing is, uh, going through the required parking charts, right? And get, getting rid of parking for certain stuff. Uh, even taking a hard look at, uh, the commercial zones. You know, it doesn't make sense to me that we're requiring residential have parking spaces on these tiny little lots on Lina. Uh, and then the third comment is I think the city council should take a hard look at a, uh, kind of a, uh, Manzanita center parking strategy. That was discussed a little bit with the TSP. And, uh, develop a, a strategy about how to accommodate visitor parking in our commercial core stuff a little bit better than it is now.
Okay. Thanks, Bert. Um, well, that's the end of the presentation. Um, those are the concepts and the next steps will be that you'll see code, um, track change code amendments coming your way. But we'll have lots of 3D examples to illustrate how this stuff is working. Cause I'm, I think, um, that is needed. That we'll need to explain, how does the 2,500 square feet work? How does the aggregate lot for what do you walk up in the middle housing one work? How does, um, how do we limit size to fit with the texture, et cetera, of a neighborhood? So expect, um, a new package of material in your next planning commission and we'll keep this moving forward.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Karen, before, before we adjourn, can I just touch on schedule and timing with the rest of this project?
Yes, sure.
Great. Um, I won't take long. I know we're past our two hours. But, um, I just wanted to remind everyone, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, uh, public input and timing. Um, so the, the discussion we had about the fork in the road, hopefully most of you were there in terms of the, uh, plan going one direction in the middle housing, kind of coming to you as the planning commission to shepherd this through adoption. So the plan's still moving. We're still doing a lot of public outreach. We're going to go through all the black planning goals. That's going to continue. Um, this, uh, middle housing code work is, we're due to adopt this by June. So the grants are, are all through June. So really, um, the goal here is to get people to come to any of these meetings and hearings for the public outreach. Cause this is their chance to come listen and give us feedback as a planning commission as we, as we step through these code updates. So it's just a reminder that we are on a deadline here to adopt by June. So by the end of, uh, May or so, we're going to be into, hopefully get this to council and, and, and front of the city council for adoption. So we, we have a couple of months to work on this as a group and to make sure that we let everyone in the community know that this is their chance to weigh in on these code changes as we, as a, as a planning commission, uh, move towards adoption in the next few months. So just a reminder of the, the fork in the road and the timing of the project.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, Tom, you have a hand up?
Well, we, we gave a lot of feedback to some concepts and, and we never took a vote on any of them. So I, I know Marcy's going to come back and with more farther, take us farther down the road, but, um, have we got to some forks in the road? Now, I'll, I'll be specific. I've obviously expressed my opinion that I don't think there should be a distinction between MH1 and MH2. Um, I don't know if everybody agrees with me on that, but at some point we need to make that decision. And I don't know if it's now or when's our next opportunity or, um.
I would propose that your next opportunity is going to be our next planning commission. I plan to come back to you with some, uh, responses to what I've heard, like, for example, the one that you just mentioned. Tom, I would say what I'm hearing is there could be a form-based difference between MH1 and MH2, but not a housing type difference. So I might come back with a proposal that says, I think this is how we would deal with that. What do you think?
I'm, I'm happy to be, um, better educated on all these things than I am now. I, I just don't want it, to miss the opportunity to for us to take a stand on some things if we want to, you know, including minimum lot sizes. There were other things where there seemed to be some area of disagreement. At some point, don't we, don't we have to make a decision? And, and when's that going to be? Next, next meeting?
I think at the next meeting, we will get closer to having make, to make decisions on things. I can also be clear about what you have to make a, I mean, what you have to do. Cause some things aren't a decision. And the things that you want to do, then you can still decide how to do it. I will make that clear.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And on top of that, I think this was a wonderful presentation and you have done excellent work. And it's been very helpful to me. And, um, should have complimented you more along the way while also expressing my views. And I'm sure everybody feels the same way. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
A great birthday, Marcy and team.
Thank you.
Unless, I'm less confused than when we started.
Me too. I'm learning.
Frank, I have one question. When is this one going to open?
Oh, we're hoping this weekend. We're, we're waiting for the fire marshal.
Um, before we adjourn, are there any other updates? Um, either Scott or, um, Leila, do you have any, anything news that we need to?
Karen, we have nothing on the agenda for next month and I'm not sure if we're coming back next month to discuss this. But we will.
Sounds like we are. Sounds like we are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, whether it's next month or the following, but my guess is next month.
Yeah, I, I think if we can move forward and, and get clarity, you know, we may not have the whole package to say yes to, but we can say yes to this and yes to that and yes, or no, no, yes.
Cause then it's May.
By June, we'll, we'll be able to actually. By June, we'll, we'll be able to actually have, maybe even by May, um, uh, an actual vote that says, this is, this is what we want to do.
Scott, did you say we sort of need to have our ducks in a row by the May meeting? Because then June is, you know, mid-June.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we'd be able to have a vote um in the, in the May meeting. If we need to push it, we probably can. I would rather not if we don't have to.
Gotcha. So definitely next month.
Yeah, so like, everybody plan to show up.
Yes. I'll just note too, the appendices um are forthcoming. They were inadvertently, apparently left off the packet. So please do take a look at that. And as Marcy said, if you do have comments, uh, email those to staff, and then we'll get them uh to, to Marcy. So enjoy reading the, the uh land uh division ordinance. It's.
Well, I imagine there, there will be a lot of clarity for us in there. Um, I'm hoping that, that it will make more sense um, once we see what the intended endpoint is. So uh, any further discussion? Anybody have anything they need to bring up before we adjourn?
I think we did it.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion to adjourn. I think I can just cut you all off. So I'm gonna go forth and prosper. Have a good day.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.